All right, I call the order of the March twenty fourth regular town council meeting at six oh eight. Roll call please. Present?
Present.
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 Okay, thank you very much. Please join us for prayer and involved by Pledge Allegiance.
Father God, what a great day it is to be an American, what a great day it is to be from Indiana, what a good day it is to be from Sellersburg. But God, the greatest gift we have today is being your children. Lord, would just ask your presence in this meeting and your spirit that you lead us and just show us the wisdom that we need to guide our town and all the items that we need. Just thank you for being a great and loving God. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you very much. Motion to adopt or amend the agendas presented. Motion by Scott, that was second.
Second.
Second by Randy, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, same sign nay, motion approved. Approval amendments submitted by the clerk treasurer also noted upon our website. Motion by Scott, that was second. Second by Randy, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, same sign nay, motion approved. Approval allowance documents claims submitted by the clerk treasurer also noted on our website. Motion by Scott, that was second. Second by Terry, any final discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, same sign nay. Second to sign.
Bless you.
Bless you.
Come on Randy, I would have brought one over here too. It's gonna be a short one tonight out there folks, so if someone wants to get a little winded up here, so.
We got plenty of comments.
Yeah, okay. Okay, I have no one that signed up for our comments on our public agenda items. We have no ordinances and resolutions this evening. We have some unfinished business we agreed to table and discuss, give the community an opportunity to come and find out any thing about the ATS integrated solutions. So Charlie?
This is coming back to you. This is for two oh six North New Albany Street, the Sellersburg Elementary School. You asked some questions about ATS integrated solutions and regarding what was involved in this. This is for a three hundred and eighty dollar annual monitoring of the Sellersburg Elementary School. What this includes is motion monitoring on the second floor, entry intrusion monitoring for door A, B, B one, C, D, E, and F, which is all of the entry doors, fire alarm monitoring, which is the red pool boxes where if there's a fire, you pull the lever, fire trouble where there's motion, there's sensors in there that says, hey, there's a fire if nobody's there, and fire suppression, which basically monitors if the sprinkler system goes off. This company will be notified and then communicate with nine one one dispatch that there is a problem with fire or intrusion at the site. This is basically a general security system for the Sellersburg Elementary School. I would ask the council's approval for four hundred and eighty dollars for annual service to monitor this at two oh six North New Albany to be paid out of state.
Okay.
I'll be glad to answer questions if you have.
Four hundred and eighty recurring every year, annual. Forty dollars a month?
Yes, sir.
And we defined what the word monitoring was, which includes fire and intrusion, which for most people would be burglary alarms.
Correct.
With automatic notification to Clark County Central nine one one, which should automatically dispatch police and fire.
For the door motion sensors and intrusion sensors, if there is a sensor sound off, they will contact the person listed on the system first, which would be me. They would say, is someone supposed to be there? And I would say yes or no. And if I say no, then yes, police would then be contacted via nine one one dispatch.
Thank you. I have nothing further.
Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, what's the date Charlie? Is it from January to January? Is it February to February?
I'm gonna go with March seventh, and that's the date of proposal.
March seven, twenty twenty five, or March seven, twenty twenty six?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to approve the ATS integrated solutions proposal for security systems at the Sellersburg Elementary, two oh six North New Albany Street, four hundred and eighty dollars annually.
Okay, second?
Second.
Good. Chief, do you have any, any things to say about it before we approve this? Or do you know anything about the system now works?
No, I mean, it's, it's, it's like Charlie said, it's a typical monitoring system. So they're gonna call Charlie first, and then if they don't get a hold of Charlie, they will probably call nine one one after a certain time zone.
Okay.
We'll get dispatched.
Okay, all right. So it won't go directly to our police department?
It's all, yeah.
Okay. All in favor of saying aye, all in favor of saying nay, same sign nay, motion approved.
Thank you.
Have no new business? Any comments from the general public?
Anyone? Anyone?
No one?
Dan, thanks for attending and your consistency. I appreciate it.
Okay, Charlie, staff report?
I'm glad to report that I think we have the pool fixed. Also, we've been working diligently the last week or two on the pool. I think we have the big leak fixed over there. Fire hydrant flushing in Sellersburg went pretty quickly. System, I would say, is in pretty good shape overall. We started down in our Jerisville section today at the Homans Lane Water Plant moving south through the Jerisville Water Service Area. If you've been out Utica Street, south of the town border across from I Am I, we are working on a water leak over there, which is, it's fixed and repaired and wired back on. But we had to call a contractor on that one. It was well outside of our scope as far as the depth of being able to address that. I'd like to remind people that April twelfth is the Easter egg hunt here in town. There'll be a number of eggs to be determined that will be hidden all around town. Mr. Easter Bunny has sent us a letter that he'd be hiding those shiny metallic eggs. Think town parks, town buildings, fenced areas, et cetera, maybe even next to some fire hydrants. They will not be on private property. They'll be in the public right way or in town owned property. If you find an egg, it will have a note on the inside. Just bring it to Town Hall and claim your prize. We ask that people only do one, so if you're out with a group and you find one, one per car, one per family, leave the other eggs for others to find. So that'll be in the morning of April twelfth, on the afternoon of April twelfth. And working with Kentucky Shakespeare Festival, they were awarded a grant through the Community Foundation of Southern Indiana and Fund for the Arts. They will be producing Macbeth at Wilkerson Park on Saturday, April twelfth at one o'clock. This is a free event, so grab your blanket and a chair, come on down. If we have bad weather that Saturday, we will host it here in Town Hall. We did that last year. It worked out pretty well. It was tight, tight quarters, but it, it worked out pretty well. So it's free, family friendly, and obviously pets are welcome if you want to bring them along.
Can I make one suggestion here?
Yes.
Just a thought. What time did you say it was first?
One o'clock.
One o'clock. We do own the grade school now, so we can put it there in the gym if you wish to.
So we looked at that. The challenge would be, there's, while we just took that over, there's a whole lot of old school cafeteria tables up there. We're trying to figure out how to get them off there.
Okay.
So we can utilize the space if we need to.
All right. Just a thought.
That's all I have for now.
How about, how did, did anybody say how the trash of week last week went? I mean, here from transfer?
Everything I've heard went pretty, pretty basic, pretty simple, smooth. As far as I understand, I haven't heard any complaints about anything. I haven't got a final number yet.
Brad, I went out on four oh three to the Earth First facility and did some of my neighborhood's limbs and whatnot from the storm and no issues at all.
That's great.
It went great.
Yeah, great facility there. Appreciate it.
Speaking of limbs, we have started yard waste again for spring. Started last week. It'll pick up again next week. It is, just as a reminder, it is the week of recycling, so every other week would be yard waste. For more information on yard waste or anything of that nature, including yard kind of pickup, people can visit sellersburg.org and go to Streets of Sanitation Department and everything is outlined on there as far as timing and process.
Okay. All right, anybody else? Okay, all right. Chief? Okay, thank you. We have Mike Harris, JTL. Give you everybody a sheet here. There's not much blue up here at Sunflower Valley. So are we finally getting everybody ready to go?
No. So we have submitted the supplement to our contract for Sunflower Valley for them to let us do the easement acquisition. Hadn't been going anywhere, so we've asked them to let us step in and do that. So we're just waiting on them, giving, waiting on them to give us the go ahead.
When, when will you actually know something about that? Because?
As far as construction?
No, when were they gonna allow you to do the?
Hopefully in the next few days. As soon as they, as soon as they respond back and say, they're usually pretty quick about responding.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. And then we're gonna put somebody on it basically full time. They're just gonna go out there and knock on doors. Lead service line, the big, the big thing to keep in mind there is that second blue bullet that we're gonna be, we're starting, I believe it's on Wednesday, field inspections of meter pits around town. So we're gonna start in the, the older sections of town, so there'll be people walking around looking in, looking in meter pits, trying to, trying to decipher what the, what type of pipe was used in there. And then the last thing underwater there on the next page, the, the PER, the preliminary engineering report and the asset management plan for the water system upgrades. So that is on track to be submitted April first to the Indiana Finance Authority. So that's, that's taken up. That's, that, there's been a lot of work put towards that, and they are on track to have that submitted by the first. And then we'll have a bunch of back and forth with IFA. They generally announce the list in July and then probably in the fall when, when funds become available. So just, just in general, that's normally the time, timeline. I won't go through, I skipped these first couple under wastewater. They're basically the same. Ivy Tech Pump Station Number Two. So we got the DNR permit that is checked off. We have all of the, I'm gonna come back to this in a second, but we have all of the easements except one. We do have all the easements that are required for any of the clearing. So the clearing has to be done because of the, the bat, Indiana bat, has to be done by April first. And Mac will be on site this week to start. We've really gotta get the big trees knocked down before, yes, sir.
The gentleman who came last week, or last week, what was his name?
Mark Lacy.
The young Steve that you sent.
Yeah, that's a good word for it.
He did an excellent job of explaining the bat conundrum that we have. So my question is, before the town gets sued over brown bats, or I'm assuming the brown?
Indiana bat?
Indiana brown bat. I must not pay attention too well, man. I'm sorry. Does Mac take somebody out with them to inspect these trees? Cause I?
It's already been done. It's all laid out. No, 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 no. We've got, we've got all the permits. Everything's taken care of. They just need to get out there and knock them down.
Answer to any of that?
No, no, sir.
To town's behalf or your behalf?
Nope, no, sir. All covered. We're all covered.
You'd be surprised at what tour claims that we get coming through his office. I don't wanna be sued by a bunch of bats.
You will not be sued by a bunch of bats, I promise. Put that in, you put that in the minutes. So one of the easements, so the Lakeside HOA, we had a bunch of back and forth with them. At the end of the day, they agreed to it. The one thing they asked for was that the town pay their attorney's fees. So they were asking for a total of seven hundred and fifty dollars to cover their attorney's fees in exchange for the, for the easement. So. Yeah.
If we were to go out and pay for the results and move forward to the type of domain or anything like that, it would far exceed seven hundred and fifty dollars. So I would just encourage you to go ahead and ask that. That way, it does still have JTL on our mind.
Yeah. So whether you wanna do it now or at the end, I would ask you to consider that today. The rest, there's one more that we're dealing with, and I think we're, we've got a final offer to give them. And if they don't accept, then we'll, we'll deal with it in a different way. So I've, I've got one other thing that's not on here, but if you would take that under consideration, the seven fifty for Lakeside, that would be very helpful towards the, towards the project. The last thing that's not on there is I have two small work orders. These are both for tasks that you guys are aware of. You've coordinated with Jake. They're, one of them is related to the volunteer fire department issue that I believe you were talking about in the executive session. The other one is in regard to the, the, the property swap with the, with the park, the park property. So that one is a total of, these are both hourly, not to exceed. That one is for six thousand dollars. So we were doing an Alta survey for, for that one to provide to the, to the school. So that, that has been done and provided. It is, the work order number would be twenty twenty five dash zero seven, and that's for six thousand dollars. And the other one for the voluntary fire department is twenty twenty five dash oh eight, and that one is for five thousand dollars. Again, both of those are hourly, not to exceed. So I would ask for your consideration on both of those. Jake, I don't know if you wanna add anything?
Surveying with the school was part of the purchase agreement that was on the ordinance, you know, they both were responsible for fees associated with that. And then understanding in that lawsuit, what property is exactly for me before the court, that was, that was very important. But at this point, it hadn't been really identified.
Okay. All right. So first of all, anybody have any questions for Mr. Harris?
Have you had any drainage complaints?
Have I had any drainage complaints about?
Charlie or anybody else? Are you aware of any? It's the volunteer fire company down the street?
Volunteer fire department.
This one?
The one you all were talking about earlier, yeah. Yeah, exhibit.
Yeah, I haven't seen a truck roll out those doors in ten years, so I wouldn't consider naming it that, but I understand.
Yeah. All right. So, okay. Anybody else have anything from Mr. Harris?
I got a question from Mike. Mike, I guess there was a tentative date in March where there was gonna be some infrastructure or some stuff done on thirty one. You may not have any information. Yes, I might address Charlie, but I haven't, I'm not aware of anything being done. I've seen some flags with some yellow flags. And I've had a lot of people ask me what exactly they're doing. Do you know what they're doing?
My, my guess is it's utility relocations for the, for the road widening. And I'm assuming they're coming in to start working on gas and other things. And then we'll be bidding out the sewer and water here in the next couple of months.
So I think the date that was in my mind was March seventh, but we, to this point, we haven't had anything.
So NDOT puts out a schedule for all utilities coordinated as far as this utility has from this point to this point to execute their relocation, and then the next one will start and the next one and all the way down the list. I think beginning of March was tentatively the date for, I believe, the gas company would start there first.
Yep.
So once the gas company gets going, they have, now whether they start March first or March thirty first, they have, I think the gas company has like two hundred and twenty days to get their stuff done. Like, we're not even scheduled to start for water and sewer until like July, I think, for, for our portion. So you've got gas, you've got Duke, you've got the water and sewer, and there's like six different telecommunications companies that have to move their stuff. So I mean, I know I saw Center Point out today doing some work off Utica, relocating some service lines. So I think that's, you're gonna start seeing more of that.
So I think that's why, when's the road construction starts?
Actual road construction doesn't start until next year.
Twenty, yeah, twenty twenty six.
Yeah, and, and that's what I'm saying. I mean, the, just the mess that they had in front of here was bad enough. I can't imagine when it gets on thirty one. But I guess the reason I'm asking the question, I've had several residents ask me when, and I'm like, I don't think we really know when. I think it's whenever they're ready to do it, but we know it's gonna be between here and here, so.
I would say over the next year.
That's the answer then.
Over the next year, you're gonna have all the different utilities and then road construction starts next year.
I'm not trying to be vague with people that ask me. I just don't know.
Yeah.
And that's, that's the truth of it.
Yep.
Anyway, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
All right, let's pass these fences off here. So first off, it was asked of that we pay the seven hundred and fifty dollar attorney fees for the Lakeside HOA payment for their attorney to look it over, you know, the easement for our sewer line go along, really Indiana Avenue. Jake said that was a lot cheaper than doing any other option, so. I'm asking for a motion to approve the seven hundred and fifty dollars. Yeah, motion by Scott, that was second. Second by Terry, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, same sign nay, motion approved. All right, we was also asked for some surveying that JTL did to us. First work order was two zero two five dash zero seven. It was for the amount of six thousand dollars for the firehouse property up here that is, has been under conversation. So that was for six thousand dollars. I asked for a motion for approval of that six thousand dollars.
I'm not gonna interrupt you. I think, I, I wrote down the school land swap was oh oh seven, oh seven for six thousand.
Okay, yeah, that's correct. Okay, I'm sorry. I broke down the things. Thank you. Okay, thank you for.
That's not what I had written down.
Perfect, sorry. Thank you. Okay, with that being said, I restate myself, say, the six thousand of work order two zero two five dash zero seven is for the Sellersburg Grade School swap property, which was this property we had over by the pool. So.
Show move.
Okay, then motion by Terry, that was second.
Second.
Second by Scott, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, same sign nay, motion approved. All right, then there was work order two zero two five dash zero eight, just for the five, amount of five thousand dollars for, we're gonna say the fire department, so-called fire department property that's being discussed. So I asked for a motion for approval of that. Motion by Scott, that was second. Second by Terry, any final discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, same sign nay, motion approved. Good, Mike?
Uh, yeah, I didn't mention the CCMG. The bids opened on April third for that, for the, the last.
For the, the other two streets that.
Yeah, small ones that weren't.
Do you happen to know when they're, they said, Mac said anything about when they may start doing some of the paving yet? I mean, I don't know, plants start opening up. I've been seeing asphalt come out of.
Yeah, they're, they'll be getting on there. They'll be getting on there soon.
Yeah, all right.
They haven't given us an exact date.
If I can ask you, the Greenwood, Greenwood Road, we're waiting on the thirty day inspection. Well, we got another week on that, I guess.
About a week, yeah.
And then all the, it passes, all the street gets paved.
Correct.
Everything's out.
Correct. Wanna make sure the sewer passes all the tests before you?
Before you pay.
Come in and pave everything.
Got you. Thank you.
Yep. All right. Hey, thank you very much. Appreciate your time. Jake? Ken? Randy, you wanna go first?
Sure. I'm just, I think Charlie and Mike answered my main concerns is people kinda get a little curious about when the infrastructure work is gonna start and just trying to get some clarity on that. But outside of that, spring's coming, excited. Kids are out to school this week, last week in this area. Just be on the alert and be cautious and try to be courteous when you're driving. But outside of that, come on springtime, and that's all I have.
Absolutely. Thank you. Terry?
I'm good, thank you, Ken. Scott?
Sure. One second, please. Uh, I got a few things. First of all, in my district, I have some students that attend Jeffersonville High School, so congratulations to their men's basketball team. Will be playing Fishers this weekend for a state championship. Good luck to them. It's a tall task. Fishers, I think, has won forty-three straight games by an average of like thirty points a game. So it's a very good ball club. But nonetheless, it's a huge achievement. Also, good luck to all the spring sports, track and field, ladies softball and baseball. This area puts out a lot of good athletic talent in the springtime, regardless of the school or the facilities. From the smallest schools as Borden to larger schools like Jeffersonville and Ford Central, all of which I have students in my district. A lot of good athletes around here, so I wish them the best of health and a lot of success for both the men's and the ladies. Charlie, can you define the lease agreement between the Silver Creek School Corporation and the town of Sellersburg involving the old, the old elementary school? So what is defined as the lease agreement? Can you explain that to me?
The lease agreement is a no-cost agreement between the town of Sellersburg and the school corporation to allow certain extracurricular activities sponsored by Silver Creek School Corporation to continue to use the Sellersburg Elementary School facilities.
So there is a no-cost, again, a no-cost agreement between both entities to allow things like the archery club, the golf club, certain clubs to meet there and use those facilities so they're not thrown out on the street, basically?
Correct.
Okay. And we're paying the four hundred and eighty dollars a month, or year, year, I'm sorry, I stand corrected, for the alarm system?
Yes.
Okay. And then we also had some other cost for six thousand dollars, I believe. Was that HVAC related?
Yes.
But that is our responsibility.
Correct.
But there is no lease agreement. There's no monies being collected by this town from Silver Creek School Corporation for that building. And actually, we're doing them a favor by allowing them to continue to operate as they have been for their student athletes or their after-school activities. I would say that would be a good gesture for the town. We would take a beating for that if we just said knock everybody out.
Okay, all right.
Uh, chief, speed sign. So when Charlie or the council gives you complaints about speed in different neighborhoods, you have the ability to put up speed signs and enforce traffic control?
We do.
And do you take those complaints as well at the, do they have a number they can call at the police department to?
Daily.
Okay. And, and you, you rectify that within the agency, right?
Absolutely.
All right. Now, I did a little homework assignment. So let's go back here. I routinely hear out in the public that it takes forty-five to fifty minutes to get through town. So I did a little homework assignment because I'm available. And I was told this weekend that at the minimum, I should always be available. And I would say I go above and beyond as far as my availability. But on March the twelfth at four forty-seven, I was at the exit ramp at I sixty-five, and I traveled from I sixty-five to American Way, which is going from the eastern part of town to the western part of town. It took me three minutes and forty seconds. This is at four forty-seven in the afternoon on a Wednesday, which I assume is rush hour. That was my assumption. Uh, so, well, that can't possibly be right if people are saying it's forty-five minutes to get through town. So I turned around and I went to County Line Road, which is not in the town of Sellersburg, by the way. I know there's Dollar General store there, but that's not the town of Sellersburg. And I went from County Line to Utica here. And I went from County Line to Utica here, and it took me seven minutes and fifty seconds. Well, I just went on up to speed and it took me ten minutes and twelve seconds. So I was a little bit flustered, I, I can't understand where this, man, it takes me forty-five minutes, an hour to get through town every day. I called Charlie, I said, what am I doing wrong, Charlie? Show me the way. He said, Scott, that's not what people are complaining about, that's the wrong time. And it's spring break. Of course. So I waited and I went and I revisited this on my own time, using my own gasoline, no town equipment or funds. And at five thirty-seven, I went an hour later because Charlie said that I went too soon at four forty-seven, and so apparently rush hour has changed. I don't know, I never come home at these times, I usually, I'm home at like seven or eight o'clock. My workplace likes to keep me there, but anyway, it's another story for another day. So, at five thirty-seven, I did the same trip. Sixty-five to American Way was four minutes and twenty seconds. County Line Road to Utica, seven minutes and twenty-seven seconds, I actually went down. And from County Line to the speed corporation limit, ten minutes and thirty-four seconds. I, I just don't see it. I don't see it. I'm, I, do I need to go right after school? What time do you want me to, is it morning time this forty-five minutes is occurring? Chief, anybody?
No, I, obviously I drive to town every day at all different times. Uh, I can, I can say on record, it's never taken me forty-five minutes to get through town.
Alright.
Uh, at, at any, and that's not, that's not turning on lights and sirens, that's just driving through town uh, from the school through the middle of town to, to my police department. Every morning with buses is, is about an eight-minute, eight-minute trip, so.
I'm not a good old boy, I wasn't raised, I, I've been accused of that, but I was, I wasn't raised here. Uh, I'm a transplant, and I grew up in a town where people factor into their work commute an hour to an hour and fifteen minutes a day sitting in traffic. We don't have that problem, do we? Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure I was doing it right. And then the last thing, growth, the, the, I've heard that there's just too much growth. It's just, it's just too much. Now, w, is there, or is there not a moratorium on apartments currently? And has that moratorium in apartments been in effect for several years, am I?
We are.
Twenty-three maybe, twenty-two?
We are in, we are in year two.
Year two? Okay, so for at least a couple of years, there's no more apartments being built? And there hasn't been any in the last two years?
There was the JC apartment project at the Heritage Square, whatever it's called.
Right.
JC, um, that was the only new one during your term. There was the Greenbrier addition of two buildings, but those were approved uh, prior to your all's term, and they just took forever to start them.
You mean to tell me that the only apartments that have been built during my terms as an elected official are the apartments next to JC between the police department and JC? And the little addition here behind Wendy's?
That were committed.
And the other only massive growth I've seen is a Wendy's and a Hardee's? I mean, I ca, am I missing something? Because the Dollar General stores aren't in Sellersburg, I hate to, I hate to break the news, so we, we covered that last week. Okay, they're not in the town of Sellersburg. We have one Dollar General in the town of Sellersburg, I hate to break it to people.
The only other project that we have in town limits is the Meyer, I think it's Meyer Farms, Meyer Meadows on sixty.
Meyer, the, the houses, the subdivision on sixty.
All the other growth that you're seeing is outside of limits, so anything, a lot of stuff has Sellersburg addresses, but it's not inside our borders.
And we have no jurisdictional control over that?
No, so like Waters-Millon area, basically every neighborhood up and down that way is sixty is county, except for the Meyer, man, or the Meyer Meadows project, and then you have stuff up and down four oh three, um, that may have Sellersburg addresses, but that's.
Okay, well, I'm just trying to get this straight, because when I see people out and I, and I, we opine and we talk and we try to have civil discourse, I want to make sure that I'm not missing anything. I mean, I know the answers, because I've sat here in executive session, I've sat here in normal session, I have had many phone calls, hundreds of thousands of emails probably in the last six years, and I, I just want to make sure that I'm just either not, I'm just completely oblivious to what's going on around me, or I'm actually right. It's one of the two. What would you say?
You've had some very small fill-in projects happen, as far as new construction. You've got the Scholar House project going next to Ivy Tech, you've got the Baptist Health project coming, you've got Starbucks.
We haven't dugish, uh, we haven't put shovel to dirt. Wawa's hasn't been built, Baptist Health hasn't been built, anybody that would turn that down, that is just, for the first time, this town would have a standalone ER and immediate, you'd be crazy to turn that down.
Now, the only other things we've had, we've had a lot of infill business investment, which was, within existing buildings, so for example, you now have the strip center up here that's full, um, you have the Freckle Momma FM, the tattoo parlor, the Framet.
Small business?
You have the Chosen Goods.
Small business?
Uh, the business over here that used to be the bank, the vacant bank that's sitting here by Derrick Queen, you have the vacant uh, veterinarian that's, uh, getting ready to open back into veterinarian clinic.
Another small business?
You have another small business at the corner, Austin thirty-one. Um, you had a dentist office open and a vacant strip center, so a lot of the new businesses that were open were infill in existing structures.
But these are small businesses, these are people that for the most part live in and around this town.
Correct.
Okay, they pay taxes, correct?
Yes.
And this is how they put food on their family's table?
Yes.
Okay.
The only large ones that you've had are the.
Texas Roadhouse isn't coming here.
No.
Buc-E's isn't coming here.
No.
Okay, would you say that the town right now is just massively overwhelmed by growth? Okay, thank you.
If I can piggyback what he's saying for just a second, though, I, I read a complaint about Sellersburg has too many gas stations. I, I looked at an aerial photo of down, of Sellersburg in nineteen seventy-five, and there were eight gas stations that I could uh, pinpoint, and I actually knew the names of the owners. And our population was around thirty-five hundred people. And now our population is roughly ten thousand people, and we still have eight gas stations.
Does that include the one that burnt down?
That was including the one that burnt down.
So now we have seven?
Correct.
Well, we don't have any car washes, we have one car wash, right?
I think so.
I mean, I'm just going by what people tell me, when it comes to redevelopment, when it comes to planning and zoning, when it comes, I, I, no one sits here, but I hear it about town, there, they, this, this JC, I, I'm sorry, I'll say it in a public meeting, and I'll stand by it, people want a new store, they want a new grocery store, they're over it, they're done, do something about it, I don't do the shopping in my house, and I gotta listen to my wife, I'm sorry, honey, complain about that store, and she has to drive to Jeffersonville to get groceries. Great people work in that store, but I'm sorry, the, the Kroger Corporation should do the town of Sellersburg better, we've had them conversations for years. As you can see, they choose not to. No matter how much we try to entice them, or whatever we do on our end, they just refuse to do it. You know why? Because they're making money. And the only way to stop that is to stop going to the store. But you know what, that's not an option for a lot of people who are on fixed income, it's not a, a lot of option for our elderly population, and they're doing this town wrong, they're doing this town wrong, they've been in this town for forever and made money off these people's backs for the longest time, and they refuse, but they'll build a new shiny gas station out there, they got money for that. They just refuse to do this town right. So I'm open, hey, all these, whoever wants to come on, come on, I, I'll, I'll donate land, I don't have any land to donate, but I'll find somebody to donate land. People are over it, but I hear these conversations time after time after time, people want things, are tired of driving to New Orleans, tired of driving to Jeff. But then I hear this other side about, oh my God, we, we're just, we're just overwhelmed. I'm sorry, we don't live in Orleans, no offense to Orleans, I'll be there in a couple of weeks for baseball, but this isn't the middle of Kansas, we are six miles from the seventeenth largest city in the United States. Growth is going to happen, and if it doesn't, this town will die. I'm sorry, that's just the facts of the matter. So, and, and another one that runs a half a mile south of town. So, I think we've been responsible, I'm open to suggestions, but to say that we're just putting up stores and homes and apartments everywhere is just, it's, that's not the case, it's just not the case. And I think somebody told me that of those apartments, only fifty students go to Silver Creek? Fifty?
I had that conversation with the transportation director uh, at Silver Creek to see how many in between the JC, uh, the Heritage Place Apartments, the Greenbrier Apartments, and the apartments with the oak ruins that were built for behind Autozone.
Yeah. Fifty. Heritage.
Yeah, so the ones behind Autozone, the ones next to JC, and the one behind Wendy's between those units.
Some of the trees.
Uh, between K through twelve, there's only fifty students out of um, all of those apartments that go to Silver Creek School Corporation.
And the fact of the matter is.
Our school age kids in general.
We could sit here and talk about affordable housing all day long, we can have that conversation if you want. We can talk about apartment dwellers, hey, they have just as much right to be in this town and enjoy what this town has to offer and contribute to this town, so I hate when people say, oh, these apartments. You know what? Young people today, they don't want to buy a single-family home. They don't want the responsibility, they want to enjoy their lives, and, and that's the life that they choose. Last I checked, this is America, and if that is what you choose to do with your money and your time, then that's okay, right? And if you want to pursue the American dream of the white picket fence and, and have a house out in Covered Bridge or Hillendale or whatever, Greenwood, whatever, then so, that's your right as well. But to say that fifty students has overwhelmed the, the, the town and caused all this chaos is irresponsible and ridiculous. Would you agree?
It's just not factual.
And what's burning me up the most is because I got a call from somebody that said two people were in JC stores arguing about the referendum. They're opposing views, in the middle of a grocery store on a Sunday afternoon arguing. I'm, come on, that's just silly, don't let things like this divide the town. But let's be factual, let's have conversation, but let's be factual. That's all I'm asking, this isn't my opinion, right? Nothing I stated here is my opinion. Okay, I have nothing else.
Alright, thank you very much, sir. Very well, very well said, very well uh, discussed, so appreciate that, Councilman McBoy. Um, I guess from my end of it, um, again, I appreciate everybody's uh, hard work, I appreciate uh, what Scott Griffin and his crew have done uh, out there at the pool, uh, you know, again, uh, I think we all, you know, uh, have seen this pool for a long, long time, uh, you know, I committed myself, is the lie easy on when I first got on here. Randy, you know, Scott's taken on the position, Randy has taken on this position and, and ran with it, you got a great group of people uh, that uh, that sit on that board, uh, so I'm, I'm happy to hear that uh, we're able to uh, make some adjustments and, and, and do some fixing uh, without a, a big costly uh, uh, bill, uh, or, or decision at the end of the day. So, uh, you know, like I said, uh, you know, I was uh, given a letter uh, asking about our, uh, our desires and what we're gonna do with the Sellersburg Grade School. Uh, you know, right now, Growing Minds is in there till uh, June uh, one of twenty twenty-six. Uh, you know, it's uh, one of the uh, historical buildings that we have left, uh, then deep in backs uh, over here, and uh, the old uh, uh, hospital, uh, White House across the street from the uh, grade school. So, um, you know, uh, redevelopment is gonna take that on, so I, I, I encourage uh, anyone that may have some thoughts or ideas to uh, you know, come to the redevelopment meetings or reach out uh, to President Langford, who um, would be more than happy to sit there and, and hear your thoughts and, and uh, things. But at this point in time, uh, you know, uh, our goal is to find someone who wants to preserve this building and then utilize it in the best manner for our community uh, a, as a whole, so uh, again, I appreciate that, so um, I didn't have nothing to take out there to the uh, yard waste, uh, uh, you know, out there to the transfer station, so uh, um, it sounded like everything went well. Uh, appreciate Charlie taking the time doing the uh, the fire hydrant uh, uh, services uh, with his crews, uh, uh, road school, uh, I know they uh, learned a few things up there this last week. Um, so, again, like Randy said, it's springtime, be safe, uh, kids are gonna be out riding their bikes, running around, playing ball in the street, you know, uh, so uh, uh, please be mindful of, of that. So, kids have uh, less than uh, two months of, from school left, so uh, uh, I know a lot of the graduating class, so they're excited about moving on to their next role, so I wish every one of them the best of luck. Like Scott said about, uh, there's a lot of great spring sports, uh, you know, all around our community. So it's uh, it's very well deserving, and I wish each of them uh, the best. Uh, we do have uh, uh, you know, one of our community people, Trey Kaufman, Ren, is gonna be representing Purdue uh, Sweet Sixteen this weekend, so uh, wish uh, you know, wish his team the best as well. And uh, so, but other than that, that's all I have to say. Joe, you have anything? Okay, alright, appreciate it, appreciate everything you all buddies are doing as well. So, again, uh, I asked for a motion for adjournment. Yeah, motion by Scott does second. Second, second by Randy, any discussion? All unfair to say aye? Aye. Six fifty-three.